Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Belvidere City Council Regular Meeting Agenda. Regular meeting tonight with an agenda for September 20th, 2021. Uh, the clerk would call the roll, please.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Present.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Moho?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Ten present?
If you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation, please stand. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear Lord, we pray to give thanks this evening for our community, for our country, for our first responders, our military men and women, and we thank you, Lord, for our freedom. We ask that you be with us and grant us tonight the wisdom, strength, and understanding as we represent the city of Belvidere. In Christ's name we pray, amen. All right. Thank you. Do we have any public comment registered?
We do not.
We do not have any public comment? Uh, item number four, the approval of the minutes. A, uh, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Belvidere City Council of September 7th, 2021, as presented? Motion by Alderman Moho, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any errors, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. We have no public hearing this evening. Under Special Messages, item six, Special Messages and Proclamations. Do we have, uh, the Martinez family here this evening? Well, hi, Adelaine, Marcus, Bobby, Rachel, Mary, Viola, Jessica, Fred, Raymond, Esther, Catherine, Albi, Lucy, and I missed one, Rosie. Okay. Would somebody like to come up here and join me, please? Well, thank you, Fred and Viola, for coming this evening. So we have a proclamation that I'll read to you tonight, and the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Manuel and Alejandro, Alejandra Martinez established their home in the city of Belvidere in 1921, and whereas unbeknownst to the Martinez family, history was being made as the first Latin community members in the city of Belvidere, and whereas Manuel and Alejandra thrived in the boxcar community in Belvidere, working for the Chicago and Northwestern Railroad, where he retired after 30-plus years, and whereas Manuel and Alejandra Martinez provided for their 15 bilingual and bicultural children, and whereas becoming homeowners of 807 McKinley Avenue in Belvidere, thus establishing roots and becoming the first Latino family in the community and schools, and whereas the city of Belvidere celebrates and recognizes the 100-year Latino legacy of Manuel and Alejandro Martinez, and now therefore I, Clinton Morris, Mayor of Belvidere, do hereby take official note of this historic occasion for the Martinez family, and so hereby proclaim September 20th, 2021, to be Manuel and Alejandro Martinez Day. So I wanted to give this to you folks. And does anybody wish to say anything? I can just turn the mic around, right here.
I would.
Okay. Yes, please. If you'd state your name, please.
Thank you. My name is Sandra Segala. Um, I spoke to Mayor Morris regarding this event, and I just want to thank council members and the mayor for being enthusiastic about the recognition, and it's a, it's a big win for the family, the Martinez family and all the descendants, and it's a big win for the Latino community too in Belvidere. And, um, we plan on recognizing September 20th from this day forward and our family as a special day and intend on celebrating likewise. So, Auntie, you want to say something? No? Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, and thank you to everybody in the audience.
Okay. Thank you. And, and if I may, um, we have another speaker here that we'll just, um, translate it to, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Buenas noches, y damos las gracias al mayor de Belvidere por reconocer nuestra familia, la familia Martinez, de tener más de 100 años en esta ciudad y ser los primeros Latinos de Belvidere or the Boone County. Muchísimas gracias.
All right, uh, item six B, we have Pam Lopez-Fettis with Growth Dimensions here with us tonight. So Pam, come on up and tell us how we're doing.
First, I want to say congratulations. As a second-generation Latino, it's great to be in this community. It really is. Thank you. Um, so how are we doing? Um, we have a lot of activities, but I wanted to kind of give you a little history of, um, the activity that we've had for the, um, as far as projects and, um, and businesses that have come to Boone County. We have seen an increase in, in businesses since, uh, in the last four years. Um, we ha- as far as registered businesses, um, through the state of Illinois. Um, we'd like to see, wait, see what 2021, uh, sorry, excuse me, 2021 brings, and, um, so that will be telling and see how COVID really had affected us. But in 2020 and 2021, we've had 38 new businesses. Um, seven have been industrial and 31 commercial. Um, when I talk about commercial, I'm talking about red, um, restaurants and other service-related activities. Um, so, um, that was in 2021 and 2021 for Boone County, um, to date. Um, as far as business, um, acquisition and expansion projects, we've been involved in 65 project requests to date. Eighty-five, um, projects have been, um, initiated through the enterprise zone and, which have brought in about 7.1 million in investment. Now, we've had, a lot of what we do is business engagement and providing resources, and what we're doing right now is providing information about the back-to-business. We want to get, bring some resources in order to help businesses sustain in Boone County. The state had released, um, awards or, uh, resources available, up to 250 million, um, for arts, entertainment, and venues, as well as, um, areas that had been impacted. Uh, we are trying to get that work out, word out about resources. We've also started our Fast Track program, which is for businesses, and, uh, and not only to startup businesses, but our goal is to help them get the information, the resources they need to sustain themselves, and that means financial, that means, um, getting the marketing and doing the research and, uh, providing that information. So, uh, the class, um, actually started this week. Um, we're starting a, a different model. In the past, we had two classes per year, um, and they were facilitated. This time, we're allowing people to be a little bit more flexible. People that are already in businesses that need to take advantage of this, um, need to have some flexibility with their schedules. So, we're ha- still having the facilitators help them, but they have certain touchpoints throughout the period of time while they're in, um, taking the class and, and participating. So they will, and if they're not engaged, our facilitators will reach out to them to maintain that engagement. So, we're, we are looking forward to seeing, uh, the impacts of this model. We want them to be available for businesses when they, they need us and not waiting for a class to start. Um, we're also working with the school districts, um, who've received a grant in order to implement 15 internships, um, with, uh, for high school seniors for areas in manufacturing. So, um, if you know of manufacturers that want to take advantage of this opportunity, it's paid for by this grant, um, and this will really give them an opportunity for some hands-on experience and knowledge. We've also, um, been working very closely with the automotive industry. Um, we were talking about it earlier. Not, probably not one person in this community hasn't been touched in some way by, or someone that has been affected by this. So it's been a real difficult time, uh, for those who've been affected, um, but we are working with our elected officials, both state and local, um, to encourage the state to offer an, uh, package, and we understand that the governor's office is going to propose some type of package that will be brought forward to the General Assembly in October. So we're continuously trying to keep in touch, um, with them, um, and try to make sure that it, this is something that will help sustain the businesses that we have here that are continuing to invest in our community. Um, and we as well, um, the energy bill has some aspects in there in addition to many other features. It also directs the Department of Commerce to, um, create a Clean Jobs Workforce Network Program and 13 hubs across the state for career pipeline in the electric vehicles. So, you know, we're, again, trying to encourage investment in our communities in order to, um, be prepared for the next project proposal in Boone County. Any questions, maybe?
Anybody, any questions for Pam? Excuse me, Alderman Porter.
Just one question. I'm just wondering, uh, we're, we're kind of in need of a good family restaurant in town here that stays open through the dinner hours, and I'm wondering if there's any possibility of anything like that coming, like a Denny's or Perkins, that type of thing?
Okay. Um, very good question. You know, you, kind of too, are we reaching out to some of those businesses that might be interested in family restaurants? Um, there have been some businesses and restaurants. Um, I think it's, you know, e- everyone has a different perspective about whether or not they consider it a family style, um, but there's, you know, some are considered more fast food and some more family style. Question is, o- longer hours. The reason why some of these businesses aren't open longer hours is not because there isn't interest, it's just that their workforce, um, has been a challenge for them to, um, hire and maintain staff. Um, during COVID, there was certain, uh, resources available for people who weren't working, and, uh, this has created, um, kind of a, um, uh, it, some individuals that are , I, maybe not interested in going back to work, uh, in, into the workforce, or because they may want to stay home, or they want more flexibility. Um, so some businesses are currently looking at how their, um, the packages that they're offering individuals, they're also looking at, um, the training that's available for individuals, um, the wages, they're looking at their, their plans, their packages, and we're working with some of these businesses in order to do that, um, all-size businesses. And this is, we're seeing this in small businesses and large businesses. It doesn't matter the size, and it doesn't matter where. We're seeing across the United States, workforce has been a big concern right now. So I, that's the reason why a lot of them are not open late.
Anybody else have any questions for Pam? All right. Hearing none, thank you, Pam.
Thank you, and thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming. All right, uh, it is the third Monday, so Mindy, Mindy Long? With Ida Public Libraries here tonight. Welcome, Mindy.
Okay. So today, I'm going to share with you the amended budget, which I'm sure you've all been waiting for. It's going to look quite different from the budget you saw the last time someone presented a budget to you. So we worked long and hard at this, and I'll let you read it, and then I'll kind of go over the highlights of the library, and then at the end, when I'm done talking, we can discuss the budget and go over different points on there, and you can ask questions if you have questions about that. So we've been busy, really busy at the library. We had this month 4,905 new checkouts and renewals of materials. We added 518 new items to our collection. We had 288 requests, interlibrary loan requests with libraries that are not in our consortium. We had 240 brand-new library cards. September is library card signup month, and it's really going well. We have a special, um, raffle for Baby Yoda materials, so if you sign up for library card, you get to enter in the raffle. We had, um, 70 new patrons, um, 84 new Hoopla patrons with 2,911 items borrowed on Hoopla, which is almost as much as we're loaning out in regular books, so that's great. Overdrive, 913, which is also known as Libby. Tumblebooks, we started the free tumblebooks for kids and the free teen tumblebook cloud, and anyone can access that without a library card. So we had 46, um, tumblebook kid new patrons and 112 new teen patrons access that and register, so that was really kind of nice. And then we also started the Up School Learning Express, which you do need a library card for. That's the one where you can take practice exams, you can do a citizenship test, you can just do about everything you want to, anything you want to research for a workforce or, uh, school, you can do on that, and we had 275, um, new people on that, um, with 17 entire certification sessions completed, so that was a really good investment. Um, as far as outreach, we had officer blanketship for our staff meeting. Thank you to the police department for sharing officer blanketship. We had to do a little session on harassment training for our staff, so he was very good at it. Um, we hosted a Moderna vaccine clinic on August 31st. The second dose is coming up next week on the 28th. They also provide Johnson &amp; Johnson for free, that's through the Illinois Health Department. It's in our parking lot. We provided lunch to the Habitat for Humanities crew last week. Um, we sent some staff members over to observe a blood drive in preparation for having one at the library, so we'll be having one of those coming up pretty soon. And then, of course, we're getting involved with the Hometown Christmas coming up, so... Um, as far as programs, we had a really successful program just this last Thursday with author Dean Jobe from Canada. He wrote the book about the mysterious murderous poisoner, Dr. Thomas Neil Cream, and it was a wonderful interview, very interesting, very exciting, and Anna from the museum had helped him do research on that book, so it was really a thrill to have him here. We, um, have a couple more outdoor storytimes coming up before the weather gets cold, so those will be on Mondays. We have a special program on Wednesday for kids called Unicorns and Narwhals, so if you have children that really like unicorns and narwhals, we have a special program outdoors on Wednesday afternoon. We also have a Zoom spelling bee going on on Wednesdays, so if you like to spell and you want to be in a spelling bee, you can register online, and we have some prizes, gift cards and little gift prizes. Um, our National Library Congress Book Festival is happening this week, all the way till September 26th. Every day we're featuring interviews with all sorts of famous authors. Some authors are not so famous, and maybe they're actors who are just now becoming authors, but if you watch our Facebook page, you'll see a couple of interviews every day. And then our Band Book Week starts next week. You will, um, be able to check out some of the top band books and register for a band book t-shirt. You'd be surprised at some of the books that are banned or challenged, we call it challenged nowadays, we don't call it banned. And then we have, are still doing our Take and Go crafts, Adults Craft this week is my design, I'm so thrilled, it's Make Your Own Mood Ring, so we'll be having those handing out, so that'll be this week. The building, okay, so the building is always an issue. Um, we're working on the elevator, of course, we, we talked about that before. It's a very expensive project. Um, it's opened up a whole can of worms. We have to move all of our servers. For some reason, our servers are stored in our electrical room, which have to be moved, so that's going to be an expense. We have to have a new shut-in box, we have to, new electrical cables. Again, I'm learning more about electrical connections than I ever thought I would have to know, so we have a lot, it's not going to be an easy project, so it's going to take a little bit longer than we thought, so... Um, but we, we have the money for that in our reserve fund, so we're going to be paying for that out of that fund. Um, we do have, we had to repair our accessible door plate because the button wouldn't go, so that was like another $400. We have a lock bar that's sticking, it will hold for now, but eventually that'll have to be replaced. Those are very expensive, they're called a panic bar. Um, so we're holding off on that till after winter, so... So that's it as far as what's happening at the library. Now, we have the budget. Do you want me all to go line by line, or you just want me to touch on some of the differences and some of the... The biggest difference, of course, you're going to see is wages. The wages are different from the last budget and the expenses. Um, the wages for the staff are $380,000. That includes the increases, uh, on January 1st to the minimum wage of $12 an hour, so I have about three or four staff members that are going up to that. My wage is a lot less than the previous director's wage, and I have frozen that wage for two years, so I will not be asking for any increases on that wage. So that's the big difference there. Um, we have our per capita, we did get our per capita money. Um, that was a little bit more than we anticipated because Pritzker awarded more money to all libraries in Illinois. He raised it from like a $1.20 per person to a $1.45, so we have a little extra. We used that money to go to our collections and to hire a preschool programmer. We were sadly, sadly in need of somebody in that preschool age. We didn't have anybody in the zero to four-year-old age, so we're hiring her with that money. We're allowed to use that for wages, so we used it for that, so... Um, let's see, what else can I tell you? Mortgages, we rolled all the mortgages into one. We did have to pay a little bit of extra fees to get all of this done, so that's why that's a little higher than the budget from last year. And it's pretty much straightforward. We tried to make this budget as clear as we possibly could for all of you. Um, if I can't understand it, you can't understand it, so it's, it's as clear as it can be. I have a bookkeeper now who's very good, and when you look at per capita on the expense side of things, we've divided it up to the three things we're using it for. We're allowed to use it for four things, and we have to track what we use it for, so we actually added line items to make sure we're tracking that. There is a portion in here for a expenditure for a grant we're getting. We don't have the money yet, we're getting a tech grant for, um, Chromebooks for teens. We don't have that money yet, but that money is just earmarked for the Chromebooks for the teens, and there's a special program that's going to be happening with those eventually to be loaned out, but right now with COVID, we can't loan them out, so... We did, we got a wonderful little donation from the Women's Club, we bought, purchased some wonderful books that they requested. Basically, that some of these grants are restricted grants, and we can only use certain monies for certain things, but we're being very careful about how we spend the grant money. Does anybody have any questions about, about the budget? I mean, I feel like I've been working on this thing for months now, but if you have any questions, yes?
I have three.
Sure, sure.
So the bank fees, what are the bank fees and why? Is there a big increase?
The bank fees are fees for, um, that was for some of the rolling over, I believe. She had some of it in the mortgage fee, and some of it was bank fees. They had, they closed out some accounts and, and, um, rolled everything into one mortgage. So there's $2,000 in the mortgage, and then some of that was other bank fees that had to be taken care of, so other bank accounts.
Um, let me see. All right. Oh, so the other question was, um, so did you hire the preschool?
She's already hired, yes.
Oh, she's hired, okay.
She's hired already, she's started, or she should be starting her first storytime pretty soon, so...
Okay. That was my second question.
Yeah, we got her already, she's already hired.
And then the third question, do you have, um, access to genealogy for like, uh, uh, actually what I'm looking, not for genealogy so much as, um, people's deaths, like obituaries?
Yeah, we have all the obituaries on file on a card file, we have them online, too. We have, we have an index online. I used to be the local history librarian who did those every week, and so now I have someone else doing the obituaries, so we have, we're going way far back, yeah. We've got all sorts of genealogy.
Okay, that I need to come in, because I was doing my class reunion, and I do the obituaries every time, and I was like, there's some people that I couldn't find an obituary for.
Just, yeah, just, I mean, if you, if you look on the website, I think it says local history@ida publiclibrary.org, just email, or you can email me and I'll...
I did see something, but it seemed to start at the Ts and not the AB, you know?
If you go into, um, on the website, I think it says local history, and then you just open the dropdown box and you go down to, um, I think it says genealogy, and then click on that, it should bring you to the obituary index.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, just call me and I'll help you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Frank. Anybody else? Alder, Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, Mindy, can you talk a little bit about consortium and, and what that $20,500 is for?
That's our, that's for our Prairie Cat Consortium. We're in a consortium with 183 other libraries, which means we all share each other's resources. So it's a way for us to, um, grow our collection without spending the money, otherwise we would have, we went from having only nine people or nine libraries in our consortium to having over 180. So we're this big massive consortium now, and we have 183 libraries. We go, I mean, like out to way past Woodstock, east, south, there's 183 of us. So if you request a book and we don't have it, we can get it from one of those other libraries for you. So that's the consortium fees, we have to pay a fee to be part of that, so it's kind of well worth it. Thank you.
Anybody else for Mindy? I will say this, Mindy, uh, regarding the notorious Dr. Cream, you know, there's a, uh, headstone out on...
Yes, there is.
Garden Prairie Cemetery.
Yes.
And it has, uh, I think, uh, some of the family that, uh, one of the family members that he had murdered, um, him and his mistress.
His wife, well, Daniel Scott.
His wife, or the guy's wife.
Daniel Scott was murdered by Dr. Cream. Daniel Scott, uh, was murdered by Julia, his wife, and Dr. Cream. So, yes, he talked all about that headstone. He visited that, too, so very famous.
It is, it's interesting, if you like history.
And I actually am going to be writing about Julia for my next Rad Women of Belvidere article. I have located her after she was let off scot-free, I know where she went, I know what happened to her.
That'll be interesting.
Yeah, should be, it's pretty cool.
Well, thank you very much, thank you for coming.
Okay, yes, you're welcome. Everybody come in and get a library card and, um, sign up for the Baby Yoda gift.
Thank you for the, uh, thank you for the budget, and we'll see you back hopefully in a month.
Yep, sure will. If you have any questions, just call me. Make it look weird you want to know if you need help.
All right, thank you. Moving along, item seven, approval of expenditures, general and special fund expenditures in the amount of $1,410,187.23. Do we have a motion to approve that number tonight? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. All right. Any questions, any discussion regarding that number, regarding that information? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, will, when their name is read, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Moho?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Thank you, motion passed, and then under approval of expenditures, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $429,216.23. And then under approval of expenditures, water and sewer fund expenditures in the amount of $429,216.25. Do we have a motion to pass that amount? Motion by Alderman Flurry, second by Alderman Porter. Any discussion, any questions on those? All right, hearing none. When the clerk calls a roll, all those in favor will say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, motion passed. And item number eight, items, let the record show, items A through H have been placed on file. We do have, could we get a motion for the minutes of the committee of the whole building planning zoning and public works of September 13th, 2021, to pass those? Please? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter. Any corrections? Any comments? Okay. Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. Item number nine, we have item A, ordinance 547H, has a second reading. An ordinance authorizing the sale of certain personal property, police department vehicles. Motion by Alderman Snow, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Flurry. Any questions, any comments regarding that? This is the same that was presented at committee level, so no surprises, nothing new.
No.
Well, when we get there, we'll ask him. I'm not sure. All right, so we have a motion and a second for item A, ordinance 547H. All those in favor will, when their name is read, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay?
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, motion passed, thank you. And moving to item B, ordinance number 548H, for a second reading tonight. An ordinance repealing section 74-205 regarding begging of the City of Belvidere municipal code. Do we have a motion to that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderwoman Prather. Any discussion, any questions regarding this? City Attorney, if, do you have any comment? Nothing's changed? All right, hearing nothing. All those in favor of ordinance number 548H, will, when their name is read, answer aye. And any opposed, nay?
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And then item C, a motion to authorize a purchase of seven five-year warranties, which was placed on the table. We do have, we did have some additional information from Chief Woody. He had provided for us, so could we get a motion to take that off the table, please? Motion by Alderwoman Frank, do we have a second? Second by Alderwoman Prather. When the clerk calls a roll, those in favor to take it off the table will answer aye. Those opposed, nay?
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, so to the original motion, do we have original mo, we have to have a motion, correct? We have to have that motion.
Was there already a motion on that?
Not on the original, on the, take it off the table tonight. Do we need that tonight, the motion?
I thought there was originally a motion on the, on the first table.
I believe there was.
I believe there was.
So it puts it back in the same position it was, last minute, which means there is discussion.
Okay. So the original motion, notice to authorize a purchase of seven five-year warranties from true vehicle service contracts in the amount of $24,003 to be paid from the sale of three surplus police department vehicles. Number one, a 2016 Dodge Charger with the associated VIN number. Number two, 2013 Dodge Wrangler with the associated VIN number. And number three, a 2016 Dodge Charger with the associated VIN number. Any discussion regarding that? Alderwoman Freeman.
Thank you. So Chief, can you refresh my memory? The $24,003, are we trading these into KUNIS for that amount, for the warranty? Or are you just projecting that's what they're going to get from sale?
No, the $24,003 would come from the sale from Manley's. So it would come from the vehicles, but Manley's came in with a higher bid than KUNIS did. Then we would turn around and request those funds be used to purchase the warranties from KUNIS.
Continue.
Thank you for refreshing my memory on that. And I think that we tabled it for you to get some more information on the overlap of these. So I'm assuming you got that information?
Yeah, I had requested a memo be submitted in your packets, and there were some questions and/or concerns that I had addressed with Kerry Botcher from KUNIS, specifically addressing the manufacturer's extended warranty, if any. Mr. Botcher advised that KUNIS doesn't participate in manufacturer's extended warranties. Once the manufacturer's warranty is expired, then they typically will offer third-party warranties. And then specifically addressing your question regarding whether we could obtain this warranty after the manufacturer's warranty had expired, Mr. Botcher explained that we could. And we could get an additional two-year third-party warranty, just the same as we could if we got them when the vehicles were brand-new. Difference being, there were a couple of differences. One, if we were to purchase the warranties when the vehicle's new, then the mileage is unlimited. And yes, you do have an overlap, but the warranty itself for a five-year, as outlined in the memo, is And if we were to purchase a warranty after the manufacturer's warranty had expired, one of the drawbacks would be that the mileage would be limited to $125,000, plus the warranty itself would be a couple hundred dollars more expensive.
Continue.
Thank you. So do we typically keep squads on the road like over 100,000 miles anyway? Don't we usually go by like engine, engine hours? And we have way more by 100,000 miles than what we can really typically maintain?
Generally speaking, for our patrol fleet, that's absolutely correct. We have been rotating our patrol vehicles out prior to the 100,000 just because we start to see wear and tear and maintenance issues with those and trying to mitigate that expense. That seems to have been, seems to be the practice that we've been doing over the last several years. Now, our administrative vehicles and detective vehicles, for example, my vehicle has 129,000 miles on it. But generally speaking, the mileage, if you want to discount that altogether, whether it be the unlimited or 125,000, you're still looking that the five-year aftermarket warranty, even though there's an overlap, you get the two years for less money for the city than if you were to purchase that same two-year once the manufacturer's warranty has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Freeman. Alderman Snow.
And so with that, potentially with the warranty, we may, they would be on the hook to fix the engine, so we may actually get more mileage out of the cars. Is that a fair assumption, or is it not cover that?
No, that is absolutely a fair assumption and something that, you know, we can look at going forward as we're assessing the benefit of this warranty.
Alderman Flurry.
Thank you. And then with the warranty, I know you gave the, you know, kind of looked forward of the additional two years. But that's, the $3,500 is the price right now, but we couldn't purchase that two-year additional warranty until three years from now, and in reality, that's probably going to go up in cost, too, right?
It's an unknown variable in the way it was explained to be by the sales manager. Depending on the increase, if any, of vehicle parts will dictate how expensive that warranty could be. So he quoted me what that warranty would be if we purchased both today.
Thank you.
Chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I just have a question. You may or may not know the answer to this, so I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you know if we've had any vehicles that have had engine trouble that we've had covered or not covered under any type of warranty that you can think of since you've been here? I'm just curious.
Yeah, well, we have two squads right now that are going to need replacement of engines, one of which is going to be covered, and the other one, I believe, is not.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Chief Woody regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none. Then we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, for the purchase of the seven five-year warranties?
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
No.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Okay. Motion passed, thank you. Moving down the list, item 10, new business for a first reading. Reading, item A, ordinance number 549H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow a mural with the, with the central business district at 216 South State Street. We have item B as a first reading, ordinance number 550H, an ordinance granting a special use to allow indoor commercial entertainment within the neighborhood business district located at 1746 South State Street. And we have item C, resolution 2021-16, resolution authorizing the execution of an intergov, excuse me, intergovernmental agreement with the Boone County Conservation District and Boone County, Illinois for maintenance of the South Piscasaw Creek path. Do we have a motion to that effect? Second? Second by Alderman Flurry? Okay. And Brent, there's nothing new. We'd already covered this at committee level.
We did, there was, there's a, there's an attachment in the back that showed, got, I did receive the engineer's estimate for the sidewalk cost. So the city's portion of that is $8,842, and we currently have $38,000 of project funds remaining in the budget. This work will be done next spring, and bid will be done, taken this winter, according to Justin Crone from the county. So I will have the actual bid, bid prices back to council when that takes place.
Thank you, Brent. So we got an answer to the question, 8,800 for this project. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Snow?
So on the third page of the resolution, section number three, City of Belvidere responsibility, it looks like we're responsible for keeping the sidewalk clear, I assume, during the winter months? Is that just the portion that's along Lawrenceville, or is it the whole path?
No, it's just the portion that's adjacent to the public right-of-way, so it's just the sidewalk portion. And right now, I'm, I don't think it's going to be cleared off, so it probably will not involve wintertime activity.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Snow. Anybody else? All right, then we have motion and a second. We have a roll call vote. When the clerk calls a roll, those in favor say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Okay, motions forwarded, moving along, motions forwarded from the committee of the whole building planning zoning and public works of September 13th, 2021. Chairwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. A, motion to approve items number one, two, three, and five of task two, included in the proposal by Fair Graham, in the amount of $13,900. This work will be paid for from line item number 41-5-110-7900.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Do we have any other questions, any discussion, any comments? Anybody would like to make? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Those in favor will answer aye when the clerk calls a roll, and those opposed, nay?
Prather.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Nay.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Nay.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, motion passed. Item B, Alderwoman Freeman, I won't interrupt you like I did Alderman Stevens. Go ahead.
Thank you. B, motion to approve the proposal from Strand Associates in the amount of $49,800 to complete the PFAS evaluation for wells number three and four, and the preliminary design for new well number 11. This work will be paid for from the Water Department, line item number 61-1780.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. Any other questions? Alderman Snow?
And I realize this is premature, but what generally will happen to those physical locations once you do shut the wells down, if that's what occurs, besides capping the wells? Do they go back to be sold off, or you just maintain the building and the premise? Or they, what's the going premise?
Well, number three is at the Water Department, 210 Whitney, so that'll be capped, but we will still utilize that of those facilities. There is a ground storage reservoir there that can still be filled through the system. Doesn't need the well to do that, so we will still utilize that. As far as well four goes, if we have to abandon that one, that's, it's in a residential neighborhood with that lot, so that could be kept, it could be demolished, and be, basically be a vacant lot that we could utilize for redevelopment.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor will signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay, on a roll call vote?
Snow.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Burton.
Aye.
Flurry.
Aye.
Frank.
Aye.
Freeman.
Aye.
McGee.
Aye.
Mahal.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Alderwoman Freeman?
C, motion to waive the bidding requirements for factory updates to the thickening centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee to waive the bidding requirements. Any discussion? Any questions, any comments? It appears that this will take a supermajority vote, majority of eight of the elected officials. So I guess I get to vote on it. Any other questions regarding the waiving? Okay, hearing none, all those in, uh, in favor will signify by saying aye, and opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Stevens?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Ten in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. Chairwoman Freeman, continue.
D, motion to approve the proposal from Centrisys for factory updates to the thickening centrifuge at the wastewater treatment plant at a cost not to exceed $91,225. This work will be paid for from the sewer depreciation account.
Okay, we have a motion out of committee. We have any discussion, any further questions, any concerns? Alderwoman Freeman, you have your hand up? Are you waving at me?
No. Thank you. So Brent, um, this says not to exceed $91,225. So if they come in with change orders, you have to bring that, um, back to us for approval to go above that, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, hearing none, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor then. Those in favor will signify by saying aye, those opposed, nay, when the clerk calls a roll.
Burton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Mahal?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?